Can open the meeting for Monday, April 10th at 6:34. Anything or not to accept the agenda is may be amended.
I'd like to make a few amendments. I really didn't get to go through the minutes.
Okay.
So we can table them for later.
Recording in progress.
Yeah, I read them and didn't have anything, so it's fine with me.
I just didn't have a chance to leave anything in there.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, well, when we get to it, we can just table it.
And I just whether if we want to add these to the managers list, there's three items that we have to address. One is a loader lease resolution that came on a financing thing. Another is the authorized 72K for GMP. And then the other is the catalyst letter intent catalyst is a is a grant.
Okay.
Okay.
So I just rushed in here because I was on a phone call. Can I take two minutes because Peggy gave me stuff for the liquor control for me to follow?
Okay.
All right, so let me just go grab it. All right.
If you want to.
Oh, you have them?
I have another copy.
Okay.
Actually, he has it. He doesn't need it.
Okay. I'm in favor of accepting the agenda as amended. Please say aye.
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 Do we have any select board concerns that are not on the agenda?
I don't right now.
Okay. Between the people zoomed in, you folks have anything that's not already on the agenda?
A question that Chet might be able to answer quickly if it's coming up later or not. In reference to the transition paperwork, it talked about any of the volunteers would be, and I may have the wrong wording for this, reappointed by the town. And I don't know if that's taken place.
It has not taken place yet.
Okay.
I just got the, we were about to do it when the other meeting happened and things. I have, I have the roster that I'm going to appoint. And then there was the question of was it, were there a bunch of people that were removing themselves from consideration?
I have a question based on that.
Go.
When they're appointed, then there'll be a, they'll get the handbook at that.
That is correct. Actually, I have 30 handbooks in here.
You answered the question.
So I have a question to you as a town manager on the subject here. So this is a corporation folding or the town taking whatever of of this possession or whatever. This is all personnel stuff. It doesn't involve the select board. It was.
No, that part does not.
Okay.
No, that the part about the the personnel moving to the town is not part of from a select board. That is approved by the town manager.
The town manager approves from whatever group hands over to.
Correct.
To come over and then you guys make the appointments from there.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure is it coming into meetings and that this is nothing to do with us?
No.
Was there anything else? Please come out. Okay. Peggy, you're up.
I told Peggy she handed me it to be a lot easier here. So we've got Free Hub LLC for a second class. The renewal is good. Free Hub is base camp down here on Route 4.
Oh, no, my copies.
Yeah, no, this is this.
No, I've got it. No, I just, I moved it when I moved the minutes.
Then we have the garlic for a first class. And we have two outside consumption permits and a third class. Once again, since we, the second outside consumption permit area is in an area that we allowed during the COVID.
Right.
And we let the resort and the winter operations stick to what they were doing. That will end after this summer. Okay, so next year, you guys that have outside consumption permits in that extra area, remember how you filed the paperwork that one time? We were going to approve it, but we said, no, here's your money back because of COVID.
Okay.
You'll have to really come in next year, not this summer.
I don't know. Is this outside consumption permits?
Well, it was, it's the.
I think it's their front deck.
It's the front deck and they added something.
And they stopped serving in the parking lot a year ago.
Yeah, but he still.
I think it's the back area.
He still wants to have, because he came into Peggy and LaCrease and saying that before LaCrease left, he's still putting it in there. He's not planning on using it just in case he needs it.
Okay.
And so, so we have that. Those four for the garlic. Then there's hops on the hill. First, I'm going to go with the first class, the second class, and the third class. Okay? Then there's an outside consumption permit. And if we go to hops on the hill.
Yeah, he sent the.
He sent a diagram?
Verbal diagram.
Okay. And then he had, you know, this is a new drawing which indicates our current boundary, same as last year, designated by the dotted line that starts or whatever. This is the same boundary we used last year. He's asked, he's saying the new proposed area fits within these same boundaries, but we are not sure if the condo association will allow us to remove the current flower gardens and a few and add a few more tables to the outdoor area. So I think Tom or nobody is here, but without him after getting on, it's the same footprint, but inside that footprint is a garden area.
Doesn't.
It's up to him to work with the association if he can remove them. And I don't know if that gets into Act 250 for, that's not us. Okay? Did you hear that, Buddy?
Yep, I did. I just wanted to add that in there so just so you guys understood the situation because we were talking about adding a few more tables, but it's still going to be within the same area of last year.
And that has nothing to do with us at this time.
Right.
Or ever. It's, we're just approving to move forward with the town clerk. You'll have to deal with the association. Okay?
Yep, of course. Yep, I understand that. Just wanted you guys to have the full scope, that's all.
Right. Then we have Mountain Merchant. There's a tobacco substitute endorsement and a tobacco license. And I had to look up, what is a tobacco substitute endorsement? Turns out that, I guess it's like, you know, vape pipes or.
Oh, really? Okay.
You know, or I don't guess maybe nicotine chewable. I don't know. But it's that kind of stuff there. So we have those two.
And they also, excuse me, they also have a second class.
And then they also have a second class further.
Near the bottom.
Further down.
Third from the bottom.
Second class. Okay. Then we have MCR TPM 1 LLC, first, second, and third.
That's at Killington Mountain Lodge.
That's the Killington Mountain Lodge. That's across from Morgul's, that one there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And that's all we have that's in colored because the other one's not colored yet because we're still waiting on for a rule application or payment or whatever. So I'm going to make a motion to approve as is these colored items to move, for the town clerk to move forward. He can't second it.
Oh, second. That's right.
You have any, you can make a comment, I guess.
No, I would agree with all that.
Yeah, I think that's right.
All right.
Yeah, I'm in favor.
All right.
Staying.
And can I just ask, what are we waiting on on the CBD events?
The CBD events?
That's the.
Oh, that, that's.
Lodge down on Coffee House Road.
So that's, that's.
The weddings, two weddings.
The weddings. So.
Oh, so that's just his name?
It's just, that's just the name of the place. It's down by the golf course there. What is that called?
Trailside.
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 So he just comes in and tells LaCrease when he's doing outside catering.
Yeah.
It's off his own. We don't approve catering licenses.
That's, that's informational.
It's informational.
He's got a big tent.
Big tent and he sells alcohol. He has a catering license which allows him to go anywhere in the neighborhood that he wants to.
Yeah.
He just does underneath his tent.
Okay. So I'm going to make sure what it was.
Like a lemonade stand.
Some people might think it's something else.
First time I ever heard of catering license, I didn't know it was liquor. I thought it was catering food.
First time it's our catering license at the CBD.
Oh. So.
Okay.
All right, so that's all approved.
All right. And you have your nominees for board positions?
Yes.
Or requests, if you will?
Annual appointed positions that we are looking to refill. In the Planning Commission, Jennifer Iantoni and Vince Nguyen were existing members and have both requested reappointment. Under Development Review Board, John Wasaki was on the the board. Don Martin has volunteered to to fill the vacant position. On the Recreation Commission, Amy Spear.
Vito stepped down.
Vito stepped down.
Okay.
Amy Spear is looked to be reappointed and Ara Diderian, while we did that.
So Anna.
Anna Malali had, had, did not reapply.
Okay.
Andy Solomon for the Regional Planning Commission. Debbie Burke is Town Service Officer looking to be reappointed. Jay Hickory reappointed to the Rutland County Solid Waste District. Rutland Regional Transportation Council, Young Nemcom. Transportation Alternate Dave McComb has put in his name to join there. And Debbie Burke and John Curtis. John Curtis, I have not heard back from Debbie Burke, re-upped. And the same thing for Inspector of the Wood and Wires of the Coal. And I'm still waiting to hear from a couple others. And I was going to ask also Dave McComb if he'd be interested as to be the alternate on Rutland Regional Planning Commission as well, but I haven't done that yet.
So now on the, Chris and I appointed Ara.
Ara last week.
Last week because he had a meeting that night when we had a meeting, but we can do it as a whole thing. Can you pull up to the Development Review Board?
That's right.
Okay. So Don Martin would be replacing Vito?
Vito, yes.
Okay, and that keeps us at five.
Yes.
I'm not going to touch you. Okay. So, and my only other question is that we get down to the like where of the coal, viewer of the fences. These are all place, things that need to be.
Were required by statute to fill, but they don't have a lot of involvement and getting volunteers has not always been easy.
So they have to be voters or residents in Killington?
Yes.
Okay. Mike Sullivan would love to be inspector of whatever. And they had, they had somebody up there that wanted to be the fence viewer.
I can, I can ask that, we'll double check this question, but that's my understanding. Was that, no, there were some other things we removed. There was an auditor and there was, and there's another one that the state said you no longer have to carry. We've eliminated everything, they did, they took off the list.
The fence viewer.
Oh, Mike wanted to be wearer of the coal. That's why he wanted to be it.
That's it.
I think they wanted to give Scott Harris this fence viewer, give him a chair. But, so I make a motion to accept all those.
Second.
I'm in favor. All right. Thank you. Up to Fire Department.
Well, the.
Policy adopting operation.
Basically, we're, what we're looking for the select board to do is adopt a policy that would would allow for us to have specific standards that the town fire and rescue operations will need. And it reads, the town of, the Killington Fire Rescue Operational Standards exist to ensure the safety of both department personnel and the people that seeks to assist or rescue. This policy requires adherence of the Killington Fire and Rescue Department to NFPA 1500, the standard on Fire Department Occupational Safety and Health Program, and on professional publications, as well as federal, state, and local regulations. Each element within the organization, fire, EMS, and SAR, is required to maintain its processes as determined by Vermont Statute, Town Policy, NFPA Adoption by the AHJ, or other regulatory agencies to include VLCT, National Park Service, VOSHA, Vermont Public Safety, Vermont Department of Health, Department of Transportation. Federal policy is prescribed by FEMA slash NIMS. And if you have any questions about the specific policies, Chief Lahart had presented the numbers.
Are all these different groups in agreement on the requirements? There's a lot of different groups here that goes by.
The officers, the chief officers of the department have looked at the draft rules and the administrative side, and we are in agreement with regards to the standard there.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Okay.
I have a second.
I'll second it. I just, I didn't know if there's any more discussion to be had.
Oh, no, that's what, to me, it's like you do that, then you have the discussion.
Okay.
Instead of beforehand.
Okay.
So.
Just put it on the table.
And then you'll have to sign it when it comes out.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
Do you have any other thing else on?
My only question was, with that many agencies deciding.
VOSHA and VTs or whatever.
What these regulations and policies are, are they in agreement on what they are?
And I think the chief answered that he had a meeting with those in charge.
I had a meeting with the chief officers and we kind of brainstormed the regular board office to govern how we do business. And the NFPA standard is the core standard under the occupational safety and health, but there's flexibility with a spirit intent to the rule on how far we go. And then if you look at like the Department of Health, that's for the, for the EMS side of things, pretty much, you know, their protocols, their stuff in District 10 as it goes through, it's just codified here so that we have a place to go. Should SAR reactivate and we decide to work within the borders or the confines of federal lands, I put the National Park Service on there because we'll have to get an MOA from them. So we're just putting all our, putting all our ducks in a row.
Okay. That was my only question.
Cool.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And then you can, while we're signing, the training officer.
We got somebody we can hand up.
I'm sorry? Oh, I can't see. Steven?
I'm just wondering what level of service the EMS is at or will be at.
I thought that was underneath anything. It's not on the agenda. But if you want to answer it, go ahead.
Basic questions.
Are we a basic service or advanced life support service is the question?
Right now, we're basic.
Basic questions.
I'm sorry?
Basic life support, ALS.
So we've gone from an ALS service to a BLS service?
Have no ALS providers here?
That's my point. We've gone from ALS service to a BLS service. I'm just stating a fact. I'm not getting into a.
And we take it?
Yeah.
Good. We went from an ALS to a BLS and that's where we're at.
Okay. And if someone gets certified, we can go back.
Correct.
Yep. Okay.
Next, I have a, a letter from the volunteers who served in KESAR related to some equipment that they're asking to be received back to them. And I prepared a draft letter in response to start, and if you'd like, I can read that into the record.
Sure.
Which is, I am in receipt of the collective request and offer the following response for clarification. First, the Killington search and rescue name belongs to the town as part of the transition agreement. In addition, the corporation was adamant that the town continue to use the names for historical and familiarity purposes. Therefore, any new search and rescue group will not be permitted use of the KESAR name or logo. Second, we will need to verify what equipment may have been purchased by the town and therefore will not be able to meet the April 12th, the 12th deadline. This letter was received last Thursday. Any documentation you can provide, meaning the the volunteers, will help streamline the process. The town will return any and all equipment that does not meet rescue guidelines as it will not be able to be used by the department. And then.
So I'm going to make a motion to accept this so we can go into discussion because that's how it works.
Second.
So I have a, I have a few questions here. One is that it says, therefore, any new search and rescue group will not be permitted use of the KESAR name or logo. I mean, I just want to make it clear that KESAR is.
The town.
The Killington. I think he's putting a new group together.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure that when we're saying any new search and rescue other than.
I can clarify that.
Okay. And you can bring this back at another date or whatever if you want to. And then.
Well, I mean, if you give me authorization, I can give you the changes and I can just make the change in form of the letter.
The town will return all equipment that does not meet rescue guidelines as it will not be able to be used by the department. I want to make sure that who we give this equipment to is not using it for what is not supposed to be used.
Well, we would, we would then provide documentation, and the chief and I had spoke about this earlier. Once we know what we're giving back, we would say this, this equipment should not be used for search and rescue and does not meet the guidelines of NFPA that were adopted. So that would then put it on them.
I just want to make sure that the town doesn't get, like, we handed this equipment over to someone and then they think it's to be used, and then it's used, and then it comes back, the town gave it to us.
Right.
So when you hand this equipment over, or do you hand it over, whatever, just make sure that somebody signs saying that they understand that the town's not liable because we've deemed it not acceptable for the standards that we're adopting or adopted or whatever.
Okay.
That's all. So I made a motion to accept. Are you able to, without coming back to us?
Well, therefore, any search, any new search and rescue group outside of the town of Killington will not be permitted to use, is the answer there. And the other is just the next step, which would be a letter when we say, here's what we've given you. You sign receipt and accept all responsibility.
And that's a kind of an internal thing anyway.
Right.
So with that changes, I'll change my motion to accept it with those changes.
Second.
Okay. Need anything further?
No.
Okay. Do you have an approximate time when you might be able to transition?
I'm hoping shortly. You know, I mean, this was just, this was day after tomorrow. And I got it Thursday or Friday, so it's just, my hope is I won't, we will be able to come up with a list very quickly.
This is going to be high on the list.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
How do you return a grant?
I don't know the answer. That one I don't understand, but.
The grant was given to KESAR and the town of Killington is KESAR. The decals or whatever is, and the T-shirts and the jackets and the hats or whatever, they're all KESAR and KESAR is the town of Killington. So I guess you're going to be going through the ropes and stuff to.
Yep.
And you're going to find out if the town bought them or if they were given by grants.
If there's any record, if, if they don't meet our standards and we don't have any logs or when they were purchased, we would, we're going to be disposing of them, therefore we wouldn't care if somebody takes them.
Giving them back.
Right. So, well, I'm saying if they didn't ask for it, we would be disposing.
If I go back to the original issue that hit here, I believe there was no records of when.
Right.
This equipment came on.
That's correct. There's no record, however, there is no standard for utility rope, so I intend to use some of those ropes for utility ropes on fire.
Okay, so we're going to leave this to you and the town manager.
Yes. Okay. I'm in favor of Jim's motion.
Aye.
Aye.
So you'll, you'll change that and send it out tomorrow?
Yes. The next item.
Just a question on something the chief said, again, not, not a part, not a part of any group or anything. Hey, chief? Clarification, you said there's, that the, I thought the issue was the ropes didn't meet the standard and then there is no.
There's no standard for utility rope. There is a standard for utility safety rope.
Okay, so that is the definition.
I can use, I can use a, you know.
Okay. So that's, that's the difference.
Tie knots and whatever.
Cool. All right, thank you, chief. Clarification, chief.
Now, saying that if, if the group that's on this name here shows that they purchased it.
We'll be giving back.
Then you have to give them back.
Correct.
Because then we don't have the right to cut. No, I just want to make sure that it's out there.
It's rope.
Yeah.
Give them.
Yeah.
The next item was USDA financing update. We did a, a resolution at the last meeting. When the first chimp went out last time, did not have that on the agenda. There were, the wrong agenda was used, so the remedy to ensure that there's no issue was just to issue a ratification that this was the intent to still make the application for the USDA loan this Friday.
Some moves, as Chet just said.
Second.
Anything further needed?
No, approved it. It just wasn't, I guess, drawn right.
Right, we just didn't do it correctly. I'm in favor. You say aye.
Aye.
Do you have something we have to sign for that? I do. That's.
You already did the resolution, signed this with just.
Right.
We don't finish. We don't need to do this much.
Yes, I'll talk to him and he'll answer, he'll field questions.
I'll field any questions you might have.
So, so on the totals on the revenue, we're at $764,000 out of the $1,765,000 for the pro shop. And restaurant, we're at about $151,000 of the $195,000 budgeted, with a total of $916,802 for the year so far, with the budgeted revenue of $1,275,650. So we're basically, we're $50,000 ahead of last year at the same time, and the budget is about $175,000. I'm sorry, I can't see. $150,000 more than last year. So we're technically on track. We, you know, we're close, so we'll see how that all pans out. On the expense side, we're starting to incur some expenses again.
I just comment that in the, towards the bottom of the schedule, there's two, what appears two debt payments, and they're referred to as principal 35 and 20, $55,000. There was certain reclass, this is kind of a hybrid, what I'd call a hybrid statement. A profit and loss statement doesn't talk about cash. That's a balance. And this one at the end talks about principal payments and cash. That is for your information. It's helpful. It's great. This was prepared and I didn't have time. I tried to get to Mona quicker. It was distributed. It didn't happen. The $55,000 that you see up in, in that debt payment section, I, I, I'm sorry, my eyes are really bad. If you roll up, there's under debt payments.
There's 57.
I don't even know. It's 55,000. No, come down. That 20 and 35, does that say principal payments?
Yes.
And what's the line underneath it?
1.183 million principal refinances.
Please scroll down.
Net cash generated.
No, now up, please. That 35 and 25 is, go up a little further?
You're going on the five, the long term debt.
Right. It's in there too.
It can't be in both places.
Okay.
So, that's all I'm saying. It's, that, that 20 and 35 under long-term debt?
Can you come back down?
Goes away.
Right.
So the, the, you're trying to compare apples to apples? The, the, the last year column has to increase by 55,000, that's all.
So if I'm looking at this here, it's saying principal payments, and it's saying $147,000 on the 1.183 million principal.
That's correct.
$147,000, then if I go up, it's telling me that the 1.183 is for the 36,000 for interest.
This is, the column he was looking at is last year's. This is the current year column.
Well, I'm getting at, so that 36,303 is underneath interest?
Yes.
If I go down further now?
That's principal.
That's principal.
Now you'll see principal. It, it's, it's really, it's kind of unique to show it this way because you show an income statement or you show a balance sheet. You don't show the two together.
Right.
It was the format that was adopted during the town report a couple of years ago, and I've tried to maintain that.
Yeah, because it used to come right.
Quite honestly, Mona struggles with that because you don't combine those things.
Why don't we just show a balance sheet?
What's that?
Why don't we just show a balance sheet?
Well, I can, but.
I just don't know why we would do something that doesn't, it doesn't operate with normal accounting practices.
That, well, that shows you the net cash generated. So to me, that is quite informative.
It is, but it shows.
For example, last year, the town generated, look at the line above that says, what does it say, net income golf?
Yes.
And then you have $50,000 in debt payment. This year, you have $200,000 in debt payment.
Right.
That the golf contributed 200,000 that they haven't in the past. This is very positive, like, really positive. But it has an effect.
Correct, but wouldn't we still get, we still get that off of a balance sheet?
Okay, if you can get it off a balance sheet, it's just going to show you.
The number.
The balance sheet.
I mean, we started this conversation like.
It's okay, Chris, whatever you want, seriously.
I just like, I don't know why we're reinventing this.
It's nothing I created.
No, no, I'm not accusing you of it.
No, the issue is, the separation was, interest was an expense line item. Interest is an expense, and then there's the liability reduction. So they were split apart, and there, there's no duplication in this current year's. It just, which line do you want to look at is the bottom line? Net, net income golf is $231,000, then it pays debt.
It paid for debt.
Right.
Forget it.
So if this was.
If you do a comparison on your balance sheet, you can also, then you just see it.
You'd have another $55,000 in net cash generated from golf last year versus this year.
That's correct. Oh, yeah. Last year's, it was overstated the expense last year compared to this. This year is correct.
Okay.
But it's where do you want to see it? Balance sheets can be done.
Balance sheets are just easy and you can see where your reductions are, and, I mean.
Actually, you don't see where your reductions are, but.
On a comparison, you would.
I, to be honest, I'm not so sure NIMRIC shows comparative balance sheets. I'm serious, I can produce that.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I mean.
So, yeah, the biggest thing this shows here is we went, we added $147,000 in expense compared to last year.
Mm-hmm.
And where, where we are.
Yep.
Currently, the, the account, Pro Shop has $417,000 in the treasures report, $22,000 in the restaurant, so we're still here in, in April, which is the next month where we start getting additional revenue, we're still at $440,000 of cash for the golf course to get operations started.
Is that enough for us to make it through?
Yeah, because basically, we have the month of April, this is the first month where we start to ramp up expense, but we also start to get some revenue. People are buying passes and different things, so, you know, it's still, we're still losing ground, but not as much, and we have plenty of cash to get through without borrowing any money.
Great.
We won't have to borrow this year.
Right.
Next year.
That's another discussion.
Depends on how the summer goes.
Depends on how the summer goes, and it also, and we are requiring them to do more, so if they have a mediocre summer, it may have an effect.
Have we seen any of our equipment arrive that we've been?
No.
No, not even the loader.
Not even the thing, we got the tractor, but without the loader part, we haven't gotten that, and we still haven't gotten that other piece of equipment that was supposed to be here nine months ago.
It's been tough.
So, yeah, we're not getting anything right now.
That was like the fifth item of last year's list.
I know, it's, to me, it's ridiculous that we're not getting equipment.
I agree.
And, I don't know.
They have enough equipment to operate at the level they need to, right? Like, they haven't, they haven't.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're going to get into, now we could get into costly repairs.
And also.
We have a tractor that you can't use, it doesn't have a bucket on it.
From when the course opened.
Right, I know that some of it's like labeled to, to be put, put down.
Next time, we know by John Deere.
A lot of gravity are working against them, so.
It's useless to have a tractor, you can't.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, and we, and we have, we're looking at the possibility of changing some functions of the tractor because the one-ton dump is like $70,000 replaced, it's a 2009, it's dying, and it's like, okay, can we get a trailer dump? Can we, you know, we're looking at different things so we can save some money and consider those options. Hopefully, I'll be able to bring those back at the next meeting.
Do we need this on our here?
Need a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion to accept the.
The golf course financials and the golf course treasures report.
Motion.
Second, on your favor.
Aye. Jim will abstain.
Then we have the town.
Town.
The town, the town is, is, you know, tracking the way it's supposed to. We, we have enough money to get through the end of the year, we have approximately, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, about $500,000 worth of receivables that are not in our current fund. So when you see the $717,000 fund balance, when you do the subtraction on the restricted funds, that's technically bigger than that. We're getting a $75,000 grant reimbursement here shortly, they've approved it. We're still waiting for the $95,000 one for the water. And then we have of the TIF current expense note that we're operating under, we have, we have borrowed about $960,000, we've expended a little over 1.2 million. So we're about $300,000 that would go back into our.
Would go back into our account once that's cleared up.
Right. And, and we are, we are at a place for the first time, we've put $6 million into a, into a certificate, CD.
What bank?
Mascoma. And we're going to earn about 60 grand, and it's, we'll take it back out on the 31st so that on the 1st, we can make our school payment, which is 5.7 million.
So why do we show in the budget golf course stuff?
Because we have a, one, one capital line item.
It's refinance, refinance interest. But didn't we just show that in the golf course report?
On the last page?
No.
Oh, the.
Yeah, it's the last page of.
Oh, you, what you were budgeting.
The last two items, because the ones up above, because the golf course has taken over those payments, they're no longer in the budget.
Yeah, they're, they should not be there.
But the two on the bottom are still included.
Actually, no, I'm incorrect. They were for this year, they were in there. This is, this is the final year, we moved them into next year's budget, I'm sorry, this was the last year for them to be here.
Okay.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
We just did the budget, confused in the years.
Out of 140,000 for the payment, it was a 50/50 rough numbers.
Right.
So the golf course paid 70, the town paid 70.
Right.
Plus the interest.
We split it this year instead of the whole thing going to one, next year to get the whole thing.
And then next year, they get the whole nut.
Okay, so, and we're doing a little better on options tax. So overall, the town is performing as it should, we're in a good cash position, and I don't really have anything else.
We figured out any of that reason of the shortfall, though?
Of which?
Options tax.
The, as I recall, when we had the conversation with Lucretia.
Yeah, she never.
There was, the number of people that had, that were listed that paid it was much lower than normal, and she thinks that they were late, and that appears to be what it was, so we should be seeing that recover in the next one.
Hey, was that what I said?
Yes.
I said, I think there's people late.
Yep, and there was.
So we should see it jump and it goes up.
You might end up with shoulder surgery if you do that.
Yeah, okay. Is that what happened to you?
Exactly.
Pounded himself on the.
It's got to be factual, though.
Okay. So, just, just need another motion.
Doing anything with tax sales on properties?
Tax sales are scheduled for May 18th. There, we're down to four properties.
Yep.
And Jim Barlow's handling those, one of them, we're going kind of back and forth with on some legal issues as far as.
So if it's legal, let's just wait until we get.
Yeah, and the other, and the other piece, one, and one of the other ones that was scheduled to go on the 18th paid like 75% of theirs, so that may come out. Other than that, that's what's happening.
Good.
Okay. All right. So, making a motion to accept those town financials?
Second.
Anything more?
Yep.
So Mark, while you were talking about that, that was up there, I said, the town has to take into consideration that the golf course now is making those bond payments where last year they didn't. So when we see that net generated cash or whatever, that we threw in our bond payments, they're well above what they would have been last year.
In the statement you're looking at, Jim, the, the town did contribute, it's next year that they won't be.
Right, that's what I mean, so where it's saying 28,578?
I, I can't see that, but okay.
What year is that?
That is current year actual.
Right, okay.
Their cash is going to be depleted.
Right.
And that, and that was almost planned.
Right.
But they can't, but they carry.
It's expected.
Right.
But they have the cash to do it.
Right.
That's the key.
Okay, good.
Where are we at?
Managers. So have a.
We did the treasures report?
Well, we talked about it while you were.
Okay.
If you want to.
No.
We have a driveway permit, and in your, in your packets, there's an email that's from Ricky Bowen, who did the inspection of this particular property, because I will not be able to be advocating.
That's Rick Bowen, and this is Rick Bowers?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're not able to advocate for it?
Because my daughter happens to be one of the applicants.
His daughter is.
So Chad, I looked at the proposed driveway site on Brad Mead Drive, and it looks fine to me, I think the standard culvert size and requirements will be fine for the driveway.
Yep.
Do you have the standard that's in there?
Yeah, it's in the.
Not you, do they?
Oh, do they, yeah.
Okay. I'm going off of what?
Yeah.
Make a motion to accept the driveway permit for Ricky Bowers?
And Kristen Higginbotham.
Kristen Higginbotham.
Second.
Anything further?
I mean, it's normally just falls on, we don't even look at it, falls on the town manager.
Town manager actually writes it, but this particular one, he goes out with me and does this.
Don't we have to sign it?
Yeah.
You have to sign it, but we don't really have any.
On your favor, aye.
Aye.
Yeah, the, the next item is a, is an FYI, and, you know, unless there's some objection. We've been, a couple of staff members have requested the ability to put additional money away into a retirement fund, and there's a state plan that's through, that we actually runs with VEMR's, a 457B deferred compensation plan, basically, it's like a 401K for municipalities. The state basically administers it, it's still run the same way. No cost to the town, no involvement, they can do basically direct deposits to their fund.
What's the difference between the two?
So I'm going to fill you in, the, the school just did this for, because the school did this last year, so what it comes down to is, is that this is, the town is not made, they're still going to be underneath the other plan.
Right.
Are we going to say that you need to be in the other plan to be in this plan?
Well, anybody who's a town employee is a member of VEMR's.
Okay.
Just by, that's just, it is, and they just have to choose whether they're in.
So they can say, and it's up to their calculations of saying how much they can still put into this 457B. It's, I would say that it has to be direct deposit, Mark, if it was going to happen.
Sure, it's a payroll deduction.
It's a payroll deduction, okay? It's, you can't get in and out every single, it's, it's a one-time, you get in this year, I hope not, you know?
They can't keep going in and out, it's like, you know.
You get a one-time, whatever, each year.
And it's, you can do a pre-tax or like a Roth, you can, you have choices on how to do it, and they'll come do a presentation, which we were talking about.
But do they currently have a deferred compensation plan?
We don't have one at this time.
We don't have one?
No.
Okay, so.
This is basically adding it, some of the younger people are saying, can we put more money in?
They have, they have a plan right now that, how much does the, how much does the employee put in, five and a quarter percent?
Yeah, it's right, it's, it's around 5.6275, okay, yeah. And then, and then, and then the town kicks in.
And then the town has.
Six, whatever.
It's like six percent.
Slightly more, yes.
So there's 11 to 12% total put in between the town and the employee. Some people would like to get up maybe to that recommended.
15 to 20% or whatever of their salary.
And VEMR's doesn't allow it in the current plan, so you go to a 457B plan. I, I say, as long as it's not costing us any money.
I agree.
And when I say costs us any money, what does it mean to?
Correct, there should be no administration costs, there should be nothing, nothing, nothing.
So, so this is.
If you haven't done that homework yet.
We don't have to match it.
That's.
But what Mark is saying is, if the town, like the one the school took on, the school is paying the administrative costs and everything, there are other plans where you can set it up, and the person putting the money in there is going to have to pay their.
It's, and they said it's like a 0.01 something percent thing that comes out of their contributions.
Yeah.
So we're not paying it.
Right, so as long as it's nothing.
I have no issues with it.
Okay, but you just have to finish it up and.
Yeah, basically, what we're going to do now is, there's a couple of letters that we showed, we're going to do a, a letter of interest with them, and then they'll come do a presentation to all the employees, and then they will choose whether they want to.
My major concern is just going back once it's done, is going to the finance department to make sure that it's made, that there's nothing coming out of, other than it is a liability, the money they put in payroll.
Well, it's clearly a liability when you take it out of a person's paycheck, and then you pay that just to VEMR's.
Yeah, so.
In a designated account, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Yeah, okay, so just get that stuff down.
But none of these things work for free.
Right.
That's the reality.
And the people putting money into it are going to have to realize, it's just like me opening up an IRA, and it says at the end of the year that I have to pay whatever, 2.5% or whatever it is.
Yep.
So that will be on the employee, not the employer. So I'll make a motion for the town manager to continue to move forward and bring us the files.
Yep, second.
On your favor.
Aye.
Warrant to collect taxes.
Okay, this is just our standard warrant to collect taxes, this one's related to the Alpine Drive sewer.
You remind us where Alpine Drive.
Alpine Drive is, connects to the entrance to Pico, and runs up the westerly side of, of Pico. We have a sewer system up there, no, Brad Mead is the, is the other side, and then Alpine Drive is the other side. And basically, there's quite a few houses up there, there's a pump station up at the top, and actually, the resort ties into the Alpine Drive sewer in the parking lot, just outside of the parking lot of Pico. So the resort has a pipe that goes up and over an Alpine Drive.
So you have a few, you have a few properties up there that are behind on their sewer for the Alpine?
No, this is, this is for our annual billing, this is just for the regular billing.
Oh, to collect taxes.
Just to collect the taxes. So this is just the general, we, you authorized me to go get the money.
Make a motion to warrant to the, to the town manager to collect taxes for the Alpine Drive sewer.
Second.
On your favor.
The next is Archie Baker Road. The Archie Baker Baker Road Bridge is complete, with the exception of restoration of growth and things of that nature, they finished in December because we had some warmer weather. We're, they also had a slight overreach with their work on the abutments, and had a little wetlands disturbance, so they're working with the state to make that correction. And they said they think they could be done by the end of April, at which time, they've by the end of April, at which time, they've sent me a bill for the entire amount of the project. I said, "Please send me a revised bill with a reduced amount, um, with like twenty thousand dollars held to get through it." He said, "If we can get it done by the end of April, do you mind?" I said, "No." I said, "I want the partial because I do wanna get the grant money refunded before the end of the fiscal year," so, because there's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant coming back on the three hundred and twenty thousand dollar project. So, that's where that stands. Uh, paving contract. Um, got my final pricing for paving. This includes six thousand feet, which is just over a mile on East Mountain Road. Um, that is a reclaim and pave. Um, we're going to be doing a few hundred feet of shim just below Regosis Corner where it's gotten really bad, because we don't have the ability to spend enough money to do the full reclaim and, and all the way down. We're doing pavement patches for this year on, on Telefont Trail, because we know we go to reconstruct that. That's gonna be like a West Park Road where we have to go six, eight, ten feet down in some places to clean that up. Uh, so, we're gonna do a shim to fix that, and Ricky Bowen had told me that I absolutely have to pave Old Coach Road this year, um, and it's a reconstruct. We're gonna reclaim it and then put some new gravels down and then put the paving in. Um, and we're doing the re-graveling with our own forces. Um, and I bring that up, that Ricky said that we need to do that is because I do live in that area, and it's, it's been put off for a point. No. It's, it's, it's in spite of, I, you know, I try, I don't ever want to be the one to get ahead of anybody. It's just that it's gotten so bad. It actually has really failed badly. It was on a...
So, that only goes in a certain distance, like towards the tennis courts or whatever?
It goes in, it goes in, we're going a little past the tennis courts. We're trying to get through that next mud section.
Yeah.
We're gonna go past there this time, um, 'cause it's just gotten so ugly.
Well, that's a lot better than fifteen years ago, twenty years ago. Cars used to get stuck.
I will tell you that, it was, I wanna say, since I've been working at the town, I've had to pull my wife out between Overbrook and Round Robin multiple times, that she would get stuck in that section.
Once you got past the post office box, I would see cars that the mud would be up into the door area.
Yeah.
And they just...
They can't, you couldn't move.
So, then they took out whatever and put the pavement and stuff.
Who's doing, who's doing the paving?
Uh, Pike this year.
Okay. And is there a bid out?
Yes, and I get prices, and it's four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars is the reason of bringing it to the select board for approval. Most of the money is for the East Mountain Road portion.
And what were the other bids?
Um, we were, they were eighty dollars a ton in eighty-two and eighty-five.
So, you were eighty, eighty-two, and eighty-five?
Yeah.
And you went with the eighty?
Yeah.
You know, I, I think in the future, just so you don't get asked these questions.
Bring the bids?
Bring the bids, please, and then have, so they open here.
That's fine.
And then we just go from that. So, then nobody out there questions.
That's fine.
We seem to be getting questioned.
No, that's fine.
And how many tons are we, do you feel we're gonna lay?
Four hundred and eighty-two thousand divided by...
Actually, no, that's not true, because there's, well, the reclaim portion is separate. There's a, I forget what the reclaim charge is, but I will say, I wanna say it's four hundred and twenty thousand of its paving, you know, something like that. It's only like forty or fifty thousand for the rest.
So, where on East Mountain Road is this being done?
It goes from Foster's Farm, where we ended the last paving, down right about the vicinity of Bear Mountain Road.
So...
Well, not quite that far.
We don't know when this is...
Or the bridge, or...
Six thou, it gets, I can't remember, 'cause I didn't, I haven't looked at the six thousand since we revised the numbers, but at the six thousand feet gets you in that vicinity, and I don't remember if it goes all the way to it or just beyond that.
So, we're doing this, even though we're bringing in a person to do lines, isn't this bid, is it, so that they want, they stripe it right away, like some other towns have?
I had looked at that possibility and didn't do it, because they were looking for early work. This is gonna happen like the last week of May, first week of June.
Okay.
And we can do it all at the same time.
Okay. So, all right. You got a loader lease resolution?
Yep. The loader lease resolution is, the loader we ordered like a year and a half ago, or, it's over a year ago, yeah. Basically, um, in the lease documents, there was a request for a lease resolution. The machine came in like two weeks ago. I got the lease documents at the end of last week, uh, and just need authorization from the board to sign it. Um, the chair will sign the, the document with me being authorized to sign the lease agreement.
So, you need a motion for a lease resolution for...
This is the entire lease, if you wanna look at it.
I'm just curious, because I'm...
They're like five percent right now.
Five percent. Why, how long have we held the one we have right now?
Eight years.
Okay. And is it cheap? I mean, with the residual coming back in on it, is it better for us to lease this stuff?
The yellow equipment, we have had to continue leasing, just 'cause of the, the cost has gone up so much.
When you say yellow...
The loan we have right now, we own, right?
Well, yeah, we leased it and then owned it at the end.
Oh, we bought, that's right.
What do you mean by yellow?
Um, construction equipment versus trucks.
Okay.
We've been buying the trucks cash, leasing the equipment.
I think a lot of people...
So, we're borrowing, we're getting the money at five percent?
Yes.
That's green.
And, but we have a dollar buyout?
Yes.
But we can borrow money cheaper from a bank than we can if...
What are we borrowing at a bank, like three and change?
We're borrowing, we're borrowing four right now. We borrowed four for the one point six million. I haven't checked this number.
So, it might be higher than... Plus, the pricing for, for municipalities for equipment is far different anyway.
Yeah, well, he, like, when I told you the last time when we were looking at the grader, we were talking four hundred and twenty-five thousand, he said, "Not municipality, it's closer to seven hundred thousand for the same piece of equipment."
For municipality is?
No, four hundred and twenty-five.
Four hundred and twenty-five for municipality, seven hundred for non.
Yeah.
Well, that's where we just give you the money and you go buy it.
No, that's where we buy it from you. I'll make a motion to approve the, um, loader lease resolution for the town manager to, and the, and the chair to sign?
Second.
So, sign under, on the bottom. Yeah.
All in favor?
Now that I've settled in, we have, what's next? Other?
Oh, I have, no, I have two other, there was two other items that I...
What's after F?
Uh, there were the ones I said that we had to add when I was starting. One is the, the discussion about the seventy-two thousand dollars for GMP. Um, and if we wanna, 'cause I received today, I got the, what is considered the invoice that we can make that payment for.
So, Steve, just to bring you up to date, I think Chris is up to date.
Yeah.
We're looking to do from Killington, from, from Anthony Way down on Route Four.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
And they're talking about seventy-two thousand dollars to Green Mountain Power to order the equipment to have ready to do the work of transferring the poles and stuff. I'm gonna say that you have an invoice in front of you that's good for X amount of time or whatever. Today's date is the tenth. Um, I believe this is closing on the twenty-first. I would, you know, I believe it's going, but when do we meet again?
Well, we're supposed to meet on the twenty-fourth. I'm away next week, leading right up to that Monday.
Yeah.
So, we can either have that meeting, and I'll try to prepare for it remotely, or we can do it the week after, which would be the thirty.
So, since we're talking about this, and it kinda gets into some contract negotiation stuff or whatever, can we just move this to executive session?
Yep. And the only other item was, uh, it's an FYI that we're also gonna be applying for the Catalyst Grant, um, which is, depending on if it's road only, would be one million. If it's road and water, three million. Um, we're basically just gonna be putting in a letter of intent on April twenty-first, I believe. We just have to get a letter of intent. The Catalyst is a grant...
It's Northern, it's Northern Borders.
Northern Borders.
Okay.
It's a grant, this, we get, if, the most you can apply for is three million if it's combined water and road, and if it's just road, a million. And we're just gonna send in a letter of intent.
So, I was just with Lyle before this meeting here, and he said they would manage it, 'cause that was one of the things. Lisa was like, "You're a local, whatever, should manage or, or let them waive it." They get two percent of whatever we get for them to manage it. Um, we're not ready to manage it, whatever. I mean, I'd rather get, and they're doing a Northern Borders grant already down there at the Rutland Regional Chamber. So, Lyle's on board. He's just the forward on the, the material.
So, yeah, those are the only two other items.
Okay. So, are there any other, I guess, or is it citizens input? For, I'd rather do other first. I'm sorry, you citizens out there, but, um, 'cause this might stop Kyle back here for a second.
Patrick, the other one.
Patrick. I keep on looking at him and thinking, "Your son." So, Patrick sent out an email to me as a town planner and Chet, and it's Killington crime study, when it was all over the newspaper and everything and whatever. It says, "Hey, Jim and Chet, I conducted a crime study of Killington from information provided by WIT. I would love to present it to you guys, meaning the select, and the select board and public. I'm looking to set up a time to meet with you guys prior to any public presentation. The study shows net good information, basically that the crimes occurring in town have been pretty stable from fourteen to twenty-two, though vehicle-related accidents and incidents are possibly on the rise." And I think we've been saying that between fire and police or whatever. So, he's picking it up correctly on that, I guess. "Attaches the PDF version on my slide deck, though it does not include my presentation's note." So, it came to me as a planner, and I just think that, I, I really do think that this should be taken from Patrick putting all the time in, thank you, okay, and Chet, and that you two, because it does refer to, you do accident calls or whatever, right? When it's, and obviously you do it too. So, why don't you four, and then maybe you can brainstorm something from there.
Sure.
Instead of like blowing it out into...
Right. No, that's why I wanted to meet with you guys, and like, how do you wanna proceed?
Yeah, but I, I'd rather take me out of this.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Okay, and, and these two out, because this is not the day-to-day stuff. This is between the police, the fire, and the town manager, and thank you for doing the study. I did look at it, great, but let you guys do whatever. And if you then feel it needs to come to, then...
Yeah, the select board basically would be setting policy. Are we gonna move in some direction or anything?
But we only, we do it when you come to us with a recommendation. So, if you four can get together, I would appreciate it, keeping us three out of this until it's a policy thing, okay? If it can come to us.
Cool.
And like I said, I met with, um, Lyle this afternoon. Taco Fresco, whatever. But, uh...
He's very good.
Till I walked out the door, my phone went off. It was my favorite friend. But, um, that's the only other thing that I had. Now, you can go back to citizens input. I thought maybe you might...
Nope.
That's why I wanted to recognize the work you did and...
Thank you. No, I wasn't gonna bring it up.
I was gonna set up a meeting with you after the meeting.
Okay.
Well, I mean, since WIT and...
Since we're all here, we can just get them.
Yeah, so WIT and Chris are here, you know, get together, 'cause it involves them, accidents and stuff. Right? So, you got citizens input. You jumped. Anybody online? How many are online?
Two and Kirk.
Okay. M. Bell, you have anything? If not, you can keep quiet. Patricia? Nothing? Okay. Kirk, do you have any questions?
I don't. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kirk.
So, I'm gonna make a motion to go into executive session for...
No, I have a question.
Oh, I didn't see you, Jerry.
Didn't see you. Go ahead, Jerry.
Okay, my question is about paving. Um, under the new TIP agreement, I thought Old Mill Road was going to revert to the town. Killington Resort now takes care of it. And I was trying to, I don't know how to raise my hand, but when you were talking about paving, I thought, when is Old Mill Road going to get paved?
So, we're starting on the water first to get up that way, and in the, in the agreement, I believe it's in twenty-four, twenty-five that we end up redoing from the Grand Hotel of East Mountain Road to, um, East Mountain Road Circle. I mean, not to East Mountain, Killington Road Circle, and that includes then doing Old Mill Road and then actually building the H Road that goes between Pinnacle, I believe, and the distillery.
And, and the paving only goes as far as Road H. We don't go down the other part of it any further.
Jerry's looking at from, coming in from...
From coming in to Road H.
And going into East Mountain Road, 'cause there's always that ditch. Unfortunately, Jerry, at some point, we're gonna have to get on the phone again this year for one more time, you and I, about getting that, because there's always a big...
There's a big crater there all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the roads, the road's not gonna last another year. It's just gonna go away. So, I'll go to whoever I have to go to, but if I have to go to Mike Salamano or, I won't go to him, but I'll go to the...
Jeff Temple.
The other person that works there. But...
Yeah.
It's, something has to be done to that road.
So...
All right.
I, I think they go, I'll talk to Mike Salamano, Jerry, and Jeff Temple. We have meetings with them coming up, but they're gonna have to...
Jeff Temple's...
Yeah, I guess we're gonna, we're gonna have to do some things for this year. It's really gonna be another temporary fix for whatever, 'cause they're not gonna go into doing a full rebuild, knowing that we're coming in next year doing a full rebuild.
Okay, well, some, maybe just some repairs then. It's, you have to drive around the holes. That's it.
Maybe we'll get a Volkswagen.
Okay. All right, as long as you'll...
No, I'm on, I'm on, I'm on that, Jerry.
Okay, thank you.
But Jerry did bring up another thing. When you talked about Telefont Trail, I was in a gas station last night, and Creeper got ahold of me, Jeremy Reina. When we say we're doing shimming, it, there's the culverts. That's shimming?